Session of the 2023 Work Budget Sessions, Budget Work Sessions. I call to order the 2023 Budget Work Sessions for Thursday, September 8th. And I'd like to note for the record that Counselors Munson, Iverson, Deckard, Crossley, and McKim are present, along with Counselor Wiltz, that's me. And Counselor Hawke is absent as of right now. I do not see her on Zoom. But we have a quorum, so we will proceed. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item from tonight's regular session agenda?
No?
Regular session agenda?
I know. I don't know. So, regular budget session agenda, how's that?
Yes, ask unanimous consent to remove the Recorder's Office budget from discussion tonight.
Second.
Any objections to that? No? All right, so it is done. Any other changes or amendments? I see none. We will proceed to the regular budget. Since this is a new night, I just want to remind everyone that this is not the final approval for the 2023 Monroe County annual budget, nor is it a formal budget hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October 4th at 5:30 PM. And the budget final adoption will occur on Tuesday, October 18th at 5:30 PM. The public can make public comments regarding a budget during those meetings. Departments will be invited to join us here in the NatU Hill Room or virtually via Zoom. And departments have been allotted an amount of time for their budget review based on last year's presentation times. As always, council can extend the time, but we need to be mindful of the time in order to keep our discussion to the budget reviews themselves and keep people on time and hopefully get out of here before. It's too very, very late in the evening. So departments with your allotted time, please explain any increases, decreases, or additions to the budget. And this will be followed by a brief time of questions and answers from council. Question will, I mean, council will have the opportunity to make any recommendations to increase or decrease account lines based on the discussion and/or need of the department. We will take a voice vote on these budget recommendations when Counselor Hawke arrives. But until that point, each one will have to be a roll call vote. Is that correct?
Only if she attends virtually.
I see. So we can still take a voice vote even though she's not here?
Yes.
Perfect. We will be taking voice votes because they're faster. Again, it's not the final approval of the budget, but it's a recognition of the requests as presented or amended by council. Do we have any council comments before we get started? All right, what I'd like to do is ask once again if Jeff McKim or Kim would like to give us any updates on our budget numbers based on yesterday's happenings?
I can go back to the draft 4B, which should be on everybody's screen right now. Kim, thank you very much. So the budgeted amounts have been updated based on what we did yesterday. The major changes that we made yesterday were in, obviously, the general fund. Removing the 1.9 million in highway from that, as well as a few other changes made a significant difference. And we're now, we've now got about $2.9 million in budget requests over projected revenue, but a healthy operating balance of 3.9%. You know, give or take depending on how we allocate the property tax levy. And then the other fund we made a big change to is cable franchise fees, where we removed the double budgeted telephone expenditures. And so that leaves us again with a healthy, well, what it leaves us with is a pretty much a balanced budget with a surplus of just $11,000, but still a decent cash balance, which generally means that we would have a little bit of money in there potentially for one-time expenses if we were to choose to. But we wouldn't want to put ongoing expenses like the telephone maintenance charges in there. So I think those are really the only changes that we made today. We have not, you know, we'll be hearing the election and voter registration budget tonight. We haven't, we haven't made any changes to any of the budgets in the frozen levy of the general fund. So I think that's pretty much where we are right now.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions on the overview? Yes, thought or sense?
We did update the budget, Tron's budget for the surveyor. We did have it estimated too low.
Oh, okay.
For the revenue.
Great, thank you. So, at this point then, we'll start with Agenda Item 5A, which is the Clerk's Office.
Council, I move to open for Discussion and Review Fund 100000001. General Fund Clerk category requests of $2,129,484 in the Personnel category, $35,000 in the Supplies category, $182,240 in the Services category, for a total of $2,346,724.
Second.
Welcome, Clerk Brown, and hello, Ms. Martin. Everybody's here. Thank you for being here. Would you like to give us a little information about your budget?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, just push it a little closer if you don't mind. You have to get it right.
Vertically challenged, sorry about that.
I can relate.
Good evening, members of the council. It is a privilege to present my office's budgets to you in person this year, giving me hope that we truly have come out on the other side of the worst of the pandemic. Together with an amazing team of colleagues, I'd like to first share some positive news with the council. Since I last presented budget request to you one year ago, we have collected a total of $19,551.95 in outstanding traffic tickets, and that money was returned to the county. Additionally, we collected $65,809.15 for the time of the year after I presented at last year's budgets. And then an additional $40,626.72 thus far in 2022 for expenses that are related to the collection of child support money for impacted children in Monroe County, as well as $43,247.18 for the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund to assist us in the preserving and maintenance of clerk and court records. These figures total $169,235 in funds that were returned to Monroe County's coffers. And I could not do this without the support of a phenomenal team of people within my office. In tandem, however, I have discouraging and disconcerting news to share with you as well. Last week, a valued employee submitted her two-week notice. She had previously worked in the Monroe County Clerk's Office. She left to continue growing her family. We were excited when she reached out and said that she was interested in returning to the Clerk's Office if we had an opening. And we were pleased to be in a position to rehire her. She is bilingual, has a thorough working knowledge of the software used by clerks in courts, and she has incredible and lovely customer service skills with often irate patrons who need to access clerk and court services, but who would never dream of displaying those similar behaviors in front of a judge in the courtroom or in the prosecutor's office. You could not dream up a more quintessential candidate to work in the Monroe County Clerk's Office. On the date that her two weeks' notice was given, this young lady had not even worked in my office for 30 days before accepting the first opportunity to take a higher-paying position within another office in the Justice Building. Just yesterday, a deputy clerk with four years of clerk's experience submitted her two-week notice after accepting a higher-paying position in another office within the Justice Building. Currently, the Clerk's Office has a significant manpower shortage that not only follows the result of the pandemic, but of my predecessor having been directed by the council to implement a reduction in force and give up seven positions under her administration, followed by the stringent limitations for employees' ability to earn compensatory time and overtime during my administration to the degree that it is nearly impossible to cover employee absences when there are also unexpected illnesses or an emergency while colleagues are using earned benefit time. Therefore, I had absolutely nothing with which to incentivize either of these hardworking and quality Monroe County clerk employees to want to continue working for me. And while that's not as bad as having a new employee quit after day one, and yes, that has happened on a couple of occasions in my office, at least twice. Between this manpower shortage, earning the lowest pay in the building, and increasing levels of workload responsibility without commensurate income, perks, or benefits, it is increasingly difficult to retain quality employees in the Monroe County Clerk's Office. And I have not touched on the issue that I brought to your attention at last year's budget hearings with the Clerk's Office becoming an increasingly dangerous place, dangerous work environment due to more patrons presenting with mental health issues and aggressive behaviors for which my staff has neither the training in social services or self-defense. I don't have to tell you that in a post-pandemic era, quality employees do not have to settle for the lowest-paying work opportunity. And you can be sure that the irony is not lost on me or the employees in my office that Monroe County Government was recently nominated for an award for being a desirable place to work. As both my predecessor and I have previously relayed to varying incarnations of the council, the Monroe County Clerk's Office is being used as a training facility for better positions within Monroe County Government. Those department heads and elected officials who poached Clerk's Office employees no longer do so with even a "thank you, ma'am" or "by your leave" when they offer jobs to my employees. To add insult to injury, it has now become commonplace for them to request that I permit that employee to transfer with a less than two weeks' notice. I know that you rely heavily upon Wiss's professional assessment of what a deputy clerk does and by extension, how much they should be paid. I am saddened that the Wiss assessments appear to carry more value than the elected official who oversees that office and has a working knowledge of the needs of the office. Their standards have not changed as far as evaluating the position, but the workload for my deputy clerks has increased. And one of their most recent assessments determined that one of my hardest-working employees only deserved an 11-cent-on-the-hour raise. This was nothing short of a gut punch for that employee and for me. My employees are incredibly hardworking, and they are a dedicated staff who show up and go above and beyond for Monroe County residents and visitors to the community. Yet they continue to fall disproportionately so behind their court reporter counterparts with respect to their wages. And still, with respect to the Clerk's budget request, wherever possible, we have tried to keep our requests as close to last year's requests as possible. However, supply chain issues, manpower issues, and increased costs for every service and associated supplies and inventory have translated to increased costs that have been passed along to my office by the industries with whom we do business. And with that, I thank you for your patience, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the clerk regarding her budget? No? Any questions? Yes.
I have a couple. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. These are all kind of addressing some of the issues that you raised. First of all, in the issue of employees being subject to a dangerous environment, would it make sense, would it be to hire additional security personnel or to have, you know, I guess, would it make some of the employees feel more comfortable if there were more security personnel available?
So frankly, this is where we are. When we have, I have had every clerk or every deputy clerk, anybody who works for me. Pre-pandemic, I had several trainings for the active shooter trainings. I have requested the same type of security that I know exists in other county offices. I would like to see bulletproof windows on the doors to the Clerk's Office. When I asked even just for a quote to see if I could find the money in my budget before we returned it back to you, I was told that we did not need that because of the security personnel. But if an active shooter comes in, the personnel are already gone. By the time they get to my office, the bailiff, we've already lost them. Our office was directly requested, not by the current court administrator, the previous one, not to use the back stairs that go out to the outside. not to use the back stairs that go out to the outside because they would be coming from the third floor, and it was more important to get them downstairs than my staff downstairs. I don't have any bulletproof from, at the counter, as in another office where I know they came and replaced that bottom part of the counter so that you could not shoot into there. And so we really are at the mercy of bailiffs if they are available to leave their post and come and help us. And occasionally, we do. Just yesterday, we had a bailiff just stand by while a young lady who was not violent by any means, but certainly passionate about the issue that she presented with. But she certainly raised concern and got to a level where we were very concerned. If they are available and not a part of a jury trial or court proceeding, they will come in and stand by. I don't have that type of service, bailiff service or an officer to stand by that entire. If you want to put that in my budget, I would be happy to accept.
Okay. I just think that's at least a possibility to consider. Now, when you said that you were denied the ability to even look at bulletproof, who, who were you denied by?
A representative for the Commissioner's Office.
Okay.
I was told I did not, a representative for the Commissioners. I was told we did not need them so that there was no point in my asking for the quote.
Okay, thank you.
And I wasn't asking for any more money. I just want to reassure the council. I was hopeful that maybe at the end of the year, if there was some money that had not been spent, that I could cross lines and ask to have bulletproof windows indoors installed at the front of my office. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, so then, another, another issue you did mention at times being short-staffed because of positions that had been reduced in the, in the past.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm wondering if, I mean, I never, I never want to talk anybody into increasing the budget, but I mean, it has been a long time. I wonder if it is time to add, you know, or at least to consider adding another position to the, to the office.
We would certainly be happy to do that, and I certainly don't want to step on the fact that you all make the fiscal decisions, and I do not. But once you put those caps on the amount of comp time, I used to be able to incentivize people with comp time, and you don't want a significant amount of overtime. That really hindered my ability to have people cross-train and learn somebody else's job so that when there was an absence due to emergency or illness while a colleague was on vacation or using earned benefit time, I don't, I don't have anything that makes them want to do that. When we go back to a time where we have little 500 weekend, that's when I really, in elections, obviously, that's when I really need people. But if there's a cap, then that, they don't want to do that. They would appreciate the earned day off. So would I. I'm required to work those days.
Thanks. Just another, another possibility for us to consider. And then finally, on the, on the issue of compensation of the individual employees, have they, and maybe Michelle has an idea too, during the whole WIS process, was there a desk audit performed? Because it seems like the fact that they work in a different environment than the court reporters ought to come out in a desk audit.
I will tell you my best recollection, and I believe I explained it to you last year. When we first, my office first appeared before PAC, my point was that the deputy clerks and the court reporters are parallel. Some, the deputy clerks do the front-end work. The court reporters do the back-end work with, with respect to aspect, accessing the courts. Court reporters have a better scenario in that they're behind closed doors in judges' chambers. They don't, they don't deal with the public like we do. I'm never saying that there's not an incident of increased aggression or anything like that, but there is a bailiff during courtroom proceedings that I'm not privy to. And should there be a bad actor in the courts that, where the, behind the judges, the bench, is bulletproof. My office is not. And so those are the kinds of increased concerns and scenarios that, again, I was arguing for just parallel, and that, of course, I believe would help cut down on the poaching that occurs when I get them trained to a place where, you know, there are fewer errors and a more quality product. They get poached to go up to other offices within, in the Justice Building. And, and that is, that translates to the services not being what I would want them to be because I can't retain and keep quality staff. And, and this isn't the first time that I've said it. I know my predecessors, my, I'm so sorry, predecessors said it. And I'm, I, I just continue to use this as an opportunity to make sure that you, not only you, but any staff who work for me who are watching tonight, know I am trying to get them to a better place. But when WIS says one of my hardest-working employees only deserves an eleven cents per hour raise, what does that say? What do I say? I, I could only look at that person and say, "I am so sorry. I have no control over WIS," but you do.
What, what classification was that employee?
It was the small claims case manager position.
What's the classification? Comet?
Do we know what, was it Comet two or Comet three?
If, I know that, and just to jump in there, I know that there were some employees that were on the higher end of those that got smaller raises because they were already at the top, you know, at the highest level. So some did get like a smaller, like eleven cent, where others that were on the other end of it got a larger jump. And that happened across the board, not just in the Clerk's Office. There were, it was all over all the classifications where some people got very small raises, but it put them to the median where they needed to be after the re-evaluation of the classifications.
And if I can interject, because salaries are public record, that particular person with the eleven cents on the hour sat next to somebody who got like a two-dollar raise, and then she, she was incredibly upset because she is one of my employees who is happy to learn another skill, happy to cross-train in a different division, happy to cover if we have shortages. And then this was the reward that WIS said, "That's what you get. Thanks for your service."
Well, sure. I mean, if they moved everybody to the median, it's true, that different people were in different positions.
But it was after I had my staff request that they be parallel to court reporters, that this would not be an issue, and it would solve a lot of other issues, and apparently WIS did not agree.
So, so wait a minute, maybe, maybe I misunderstood. So, so you're saying that they should be parallel to court reporters, but right now they're not?
Correct.
So what are court reporters are?
Difference between what a deputy clerk makes and what a court reporter makes. And so, for example, with the person who turned her notice in just yesterday, she was called up, she told me, as she was crying because she had to tell me she was turning in her notice, she told me, she was called up to the chambers. She thought she was in trouble for something, an error or something that she had made, only to have them take her behind closed doors and offer her a job. And, and what am I going to say? This person, you know, wants to take care of their family, do all the things that we all need money to do. And who's not going to be enticed by that? And so then that leaves me back exactly where I remember Linda Robbins telling you that we're, it's like Walmart. We train them up, and then a more professional, you know, area calls them up, a higher-paying opportunity comes up, and then I'm, I'm just host.
Yeah. Michelle, I know you, looks like you want.
Yes, an associate court reporter is a Comet C level, and the majority of, excuse me, the clerk's personnel are Comet Bs, B as in boy.
I just wonder, I mean, if a desk audit might not, I mean, the, the desk audit process and the classification is supposed to take into account the environment in which the job is performed, as well as scope of responsibilities.
And, and what I want to say, I do know that the clerk did come to PAC, and they did come with the, because they wanted to change the job descriptions along with titles. There was a just whole huge file that we worked on with regards to their positions. So that was all prior to the WIS stuff. So when we did finally engage with WIS, we just turned over that whole file to them. But desk audits were not done during that process. What we were doing was taking what we had, engaging with the elected officials or, and or department heads with what kind of changes do you want to see done? They didn't dive into the desk audit process. We basically, we updated the job descriptions to, "What is that person doing right now?" And that's how they came to arrive at that. So, no, they did not do desk audits on each office because of the fact that we were doing this county-wide, and that would have taken a lot more process.
I just wonder if it might not be merited in this, in this case. I mean, it sounds like maybe they are underclassified.
Well, and, and, yeah, and sorry.
This isn't just Monroe County. This is every, I communicate with 910 clerks regularly. This isn't just Monroe County. We are all struggling with this. And I'm sure many of you remember the, the yesteryear days of the Honorable Jim Fielder and the Honorable Pat Haley. There was a time when you could graduate from high school one week and come and get an entry-level opportunity in the Clerk's Office the next week. That time has come and gone. I, I can hire some college students part-time, and I do, and I work with their IU schedule to help me supplement. And at one time, I at least had some autonomy as far as I could bring in. If you couldn't, if the council couldn't approve a full-time position for me, then I could at least hire a part-time person to help me supplement and fill in and do what I could. And then you put the, the kibosh on that. Once you gave the titles, then I couldn't take part-time and just put them in the division where I had the shortage. Now I have to leave them in the position that they were titled for. And that, that is a problem because, of course, there has to be a signed job description that we turn over to you. And so I, I made sure my liaisons knew at the time how I felt. I wrote the written response as requested. I'm still in the same place that I was, and I mentioned that last year at budget times. Thank you.
Thank you. No, sorry.
Well, there's lots of questions. I can start off. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. It is good to have you here with us and to hear this. And as, as one of your liaisons, I, I can tell any employee that's watching, you have been a consistent advocate for your folks.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Your team. When I was PAC chair, I recall this discussion coming up. My understanding at that time, because we looked into it, was that WIS is not making up, you know, here's what this looks like, and here's what this looks like for different positions, that they're using labor standards and their metrics in other counties, hence the other 91 counties struggling with this. I'd love to see a desk audit that would answer the question, satisfy this, if that is accurate, assuming that, you know, everything they've told us, they aren't just saying, "Hey, look, this is, this is just going to be higher because it's higher, and this is lower," and to kind of settle that question. I think that that's, I, I would love to see that. But my recollection is that they justified, "Hey, look, we've looked at these positions. This is the labor standards. Here's the duties they do and the things they do." And if that's not the case, I think we can figure that out.
And, and Mr. Councilman, you may recall that we talked about this in turn, and I understood, and believe me, this is layman, and layman's understanding, that there's an algorithm that's used. And, you know, I was never good in math, and I got in a lot of trouble because I brought a C home in algebra back in high school. But math never changes. That is the one rule I know. So if two plus two equals, equaled four in 1905, two plus two is going to equal four, you know, in 2022. And so if their, their formula is this for court reporters, and the formula is this for deputy clerks, then there's never going to be something that will keep, allow me to be able to retain, and the duties have changed. They're not the same.
Sure.
And so I, I don't, I'm, I don't propose to tell you your job any more than I would want you to tell mine. I don't know if WIS is a good fit for my office. I know that an exorbitant amount of money was paid out for those studies, but I came in with the argument that it was parallel and that, you know, the pay needed to be reflected as such. I don't know WIS. I wouldn't know anybody from WIS if they walked in here. But it feels like there is a, at least with respect to WIS, a tone-deaf response to the fact that this is not your grandmother's position in the Clerk's Office. It's not.
Well, one thing is, I, I think we should resolve this through a desk audit. But if the position has changed, that should be reflected in the job description, which I think they would take into account too. I mean, we can't, it's not just, this, this has changed. It's not on the paper. It should be on the paper. And I think that this could be reconciled through that kind of a process where that's looked at. And then I think everyone would be satisfied. Well, I don't, I'm not going to say that. But we'd, we'd at least know an answer, hey, by the WIS systems and, and metrics that they use, we've looked at the job, we actually looked at the job with the desk audit. Now we know what that is, and they can respond to us. I do want to talk briefly about the security issue because I think that's an immediate concern. And as many times as I've been at the Justice Building and kind of recall how, at least on that end of it, how I go in there, I'm wondering if it would be useful to have a deputy in near your counter. I, I mean, to me, I know it's about what, 20 feet at slow day? I just think having someone in there would not be the dumbest idea I've ever heard. Now, on your election office, that's a different story, and I don't know how that would be incorporated, but maybe that needs to be thought of. There's some schools of thought in election philosophy, of course, that if you have any armed or law enforcement personnel in there voting, it discourages voting. So you got to be careful with that. But I think that these, there's, obviously, it would involve the Commissioners, but there's remedies for these things. This is not rocket science. This is something that we could put something in there to make people more comfortable.
And, and this is another piece, fallout piece, is that once you put those titles, I, I could have used even a part-time deputy for the busiest parts of the day, you know, to maybe address the time when somebody would come in, and it would be a little more hurried, a little more rushed, and they might be a little more aggressive. I could have done that, but now, you know, I couldn't hire a part-time person even, whether armed or unarmed, because I don't have that line, because I don't have a part-time line or even a full-time line that says bailiff dedicated to the Clerk's Office.
I guess I'm not quite, help me understand exactly what the, I, I may be missing something about the part-time issue then. Why is it that you can't hire a part-time position and then kind of move them around anymore?
Because the new, the person signs the job description that they do, they are titled since this WIS assessment that was imposed. And, and so I don't have one that says "part-time duties unknown" where I could write a description for a part-time bailiff or a full-time. I don't have that.
Couldn't we just create a part-time description that kind of includes all of the duties? And, you know, just kind of throw it all into a pot and call it utility infielder or something, you know, or something like that?
That wasn't the, I didn't feel like that was a choice that we had. I certainly could say other duties as a sign.
Yeah, there, because of, we ask departments to submit part-time job descriptions, even though part-time's not, you know, considered, but at least have a part-time position. So we sent that out. Some departments did part-time job descriptions and some didn't.
And we did for what we had, the, the part-time opportunities that we had at the time that they were requested.
You see what I mean? Just create a part-time job description. It's a lot more open and flexible.
If I could have an open, some open-ended part-time, I would probably need more than one.
That one seems like, that one should be easy to fix.
It really does. All right. Sorry, I didn't realize that was a problem, and we could have worked on that and created something for you. So, yeah, I didn't realize that you felt, you know, that it was restrictive.
It, it is restrictive because the, the memos that I get from your office are, "This person is working for you, but we don't have a job description." And it could be that I need them to fill in in civil, or I might need them to fill in in POAP.
I, I assumed you had a, what I would call a generic part-time app. So, yep. So, yeah, that's an easy remedy on that.
You could easily write coverage for other areas.
Right. I think something that, that PAC, certainly I had suggested some time ago, which might have added to your situation, was because we had people working part-time, doing similar jobs in different offices, some making a great deal more in one office than the other. And so in order to try to be fair, as we're supposed to be doing as the council, making it fair across the board. And so in order to try to be fair as we're supposed to be doing, as the council making it fair across the board, that's when we thought it might be wise to have a job description, making sure that part-time person was getting paid the correct salary for whatever job they were doing. So now, if you have one that's like a floater that's supposed to be able to do anything in that office, then it seems to me that would be part of the job description. There's gotta be a way to work.
Yeah, it was never our intention to try to, you know, to restrict you from being able to move people around to fill in where you need them.
Well, it did. And I said something at the time. And Madam Councilwoman, what you're saying is an excellent suggestion. The problem is, is if the pay were more equitable, that would translate a lot easier because I could just put somebody floating around. But right now, not only do I not have the ability to move them around because of the titles, but they're, they're not paid in a way that they're even interested in cross-training or learning anything. Um, addition, in addition to the duties that I am assigning them to do. I hope I made that make sense.
These are things that really is so important for those of us on the council to hear from the department heads, what hands-on difference that they, they need to help with. And if, if she's having this problem, perhaps other offices are as well. So, thank you for sharing your situation.
Thank you for listening. I appreciate it. I, I will continue to advocate for my employees, some of whom may be watching this evening. Um, I try to make it as pleasant an environment as I possibly can so that they will want to work, come to work. But here's the truth. The bottom line at the end of the night is can you meet your expenses every two weeks when you get your paycheck? And when you know that people are upstairs making, you know, nearly one and a half times what you make, i- it, it all comes down to the dollar. And I can't, I'm, I'm stuck with the assessment, the WIS assessment that, here you go, eleven cents. Thanks for your service.
Counselor Iverson.
Thank you. Uh, so thank you for preparing so excellently for tonight's presentation. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
I, I, I think I want to talk about the retention issue because I think that's something that we can solve. And obviously that's been touched on by a lot of folks up here on the dais. And, and what I want to add to that conversation is that when the WIS study came out, we did have multiple departments that came forward and said, hey, they're comparing apples to oranges here. This doesn't fit in my department. I'm having issues. That's right.
I absolutely did. Thank you.
And so we've been working with airports, the health department and those, those departments like that, where it seems like, well, maybe WIS didn't understand how unique that situation was. And it seems like this is another one of those cases.
You're making my point, Counselor. Counselor Iverson, I don't believe, my personal Nicole Brown opinion is that WIS is not in tune. And I know they're used by other agencies throughout the state. They are not in tune with what goes on in my office. I don't know what that translates to for you in terms of hiring an independent company, but it does not work for the Monroe County Clerk's Office. Thank you.
I hear you. I, my question then um, is it seems that uh, you know, we, it's, it seems like there's, there's some, some, something of a consensus being built here. Uh, and it seems redundant to send this back to PAC. Uh, or that would be your recommendation, I guess, Michelle, to bring it to PAC or?
No, no. Um, if, if there's a consensus to do a desk audit, that's all I need to do is move from you guys. And I just reach out to them, coordinate with the clerk on a good time, figure out which positions we want to have a desk audit with, that kind of thing. And then we would have to determine, you know, what kind of a timeline kind of thing. So that's all I need from you guys.
Yeah, so that's exactly my, my three recommendations of things that we have control over, the security. Unfortunately, we don't, but recognize that that is, that is a serious issue. Um, yeah, coordinate to make the desk audit happen. That can happen very quickly. Um, we work with the council office to create a, a, a more flexible part-time position description that'll give you what you need.
I could also use a more flexible full-time opportunity because there are people I can't move to different levels when I have a manpower shortage because that's not what their job description says.
And then my third was could be consider, you know, work with your liaison, but consider requesting another full-time position.
I would be very grateful.
Or adding coverage into job descriptions for your full-time folks so that they can cross-cover when needed.
That doesn't add hours, right? You're right.
Like it's adding money. Gonna be what's important. Bottom line, we got to pay our mortgages.
I, I, I think if I could make a statement, so I, you know, I can't think of any positions off the top of my head, but like mail clerk and your phones clerk. They, you know, uh, you could like write into the job descriptions, you know, one backs the other, you know, and that kind of thing. So, you know, we would have to work with her on, so if this person's out or this position, then, you know, we would want to use, utilize this. Or I, I think there should be a statement in the job descriptions, which I thought that's what, but I can't remember. You know, or other duties as assigned. So, which is a very generic kind of thing. If this is like a temporary, you know, just a backup kind of thing.
And, and we had other duties as a sign in those previous descriptions. And we were told that we had to specifically define it. In fact, the, the particular employee who gets eleven cents more on the hour, um, you know, she was going in different, she volunteered for anything. I'll do it, I'll do it. You got it, essence, I'll do it. And when she tried to add those to her job description, was told, nope, sorry you do those extra duties, but we can't put those in your job description. And again, I'm going back to, um, I, I will hammer this as long as you allow me to. The problem is that I don't have anybody interested in really cross, very few people interested in cross-training when there's no financial incentive or benefit or perk for them to do so. And, but if, if they want more responsibility, they're gonna go to another agency and get paid more money. That's where I am and that's not going to change until there's some kind of epiphanous moment that I'm hopeful we have here.
Okay. Well, we've got several issues here. It sounds like we have several ideas. Maybe possibly leading to a change in compensation, but we need to do the desk audit before we can talk about that. So I think we should implement the desk audit as soon as possible. Um, and I do think we should look at the job descriptions. Um, at some point in the future to see if specifically, I know in the auditor's office, very specifically this job backs up this one and this backs up. And it's not just everybody can cover for anybody. So, you know, it needs to be a little strategic, but I think that that could happen in conjunction with um, understanding a little bit better what's going on at, within a person's job. And that's the first thing we need to do. Um, part-time job descriptions should definitely be flexible um, to the extent that makes sense. So.
That would help. I'm, I'm going on record as I need more, but that would be a good start. Yep. Some flexible part-time that I can use to help me cover shortages while we figure the rest of it out. And I'm grateful for you even considering that.
Okay, let's follow up on that for sure. Um, I guess.
Well, I was concerned about the security issue. And I don't know at what, how the council could interact with that. Uh, but you know, the only thing we do is approve budgets. Um, we don't order security to be anywhere except for right here to cover. Did you notice there wasn't security here at the beginning of the meeting? And we need to have that too. So, but I'm just saying, uh, we might want to have a conversation about that or you have it with whoever's.
It's the commissioners are the appropriate body for doing that.
And but they need to take a request to them along with the uh, Sheriff's Department or, or the courts. Of course, it's over at bailiffs. Then they can work, the court is over bailiffs. Am I correct? I mean, that's where we bet you them. And so they could maybe work together to go for with requests. We can't do anything about it. We, we can't put something. If somebody asks for it, then we can respond.
It sounds like that might be a viable option too because I'm hearing multiple voices that are in support of making sure your, your employees feel safe. Um, we can't reconstruct the building. We have other plans regarding that building. So I know there's some limitations, but um, I would, I would think that if you could present this to the commissioners, um, and if you need another, if you need, if you need a, um, a bailiff position, that I think that makes a lot of sense too. I, I like the idea of to, oh, also having somebody be flexible. Maybe some of the time they're outside your office, sometimes they're inside, you know. But that's, work with the courts on that.
I will do that.
Yeah.
When, when you need a bailiff to do something in your offices, who do you contact?
So as you indicated, they're about twenty feet outside of the door. It depends upon how busy they are. If they only have one man at the door, the security entrance and checkpoint, they're not coming to the clerk's office. You know, and so you can have somebody at the door, somebody upstairs in a jury trial, somebody standing by for protective order court. And so then there's nobody available for me. I am incredibly fortunate to have someone who pre, in another lifetime, um, did work as a sheriff's deputy. And so she is wonderful about stepping up, but that is not in her primary signed job description. She does that because she is loyal to the clerk's office, you know, and, and so she will step up. But she's on her own if we don't have a bailiff available.
Sure.
But you don't have a specific.
I don't have a specific person and my, my people are not trained in self-defense. And, and so they cannot, if someone means them harm, they do not have the training to defend themselves in a non-lethal manner.
Yes, Counselor Manson, Jess.
Thank you. I would like to be able to see this resolved within this budget year for twenty twenty-three. I don't see any reason why, if it is approved, taken by the courts to the commissioners and approved, that we cannot include this in the appropriate budget.
I would be.
And I, I want to see a resolution to this.
I would be very grateful.
Okay, Jennifer. Sorry. Um, so in prepping for this budget week for us here in the county, and I watched last year and I watched how you said last year that you had security issues and you have went through the proper procedures and um, brought it to the, the powers that be and it is still an issue. As your liaison, it's definitely concerning to me that this year, this is still something. And I know that, you know, the, the Justice Building have had folks going in and, you know, with the First Amendment groups going in and we're in a different climate.
We absolutely.
And it is very concerning as a person that also works in another government building. Um, it's concerning to hear that this is year number two that you're going in. Um, and it still is an issue. And all it seemed like from here and what you just said is, all you were asking is for the, the measure to look into to see if that is, um, you know, an avenue that you can consider. And so it is very disappointing and I will go on the record to say that it's disappointing. And it obviously seems to me that there is a, another, a, a common denominator to this. Um, and as your liaison, also with Counselor Deckert, um, I would love to see how we can work closely and, and do so expeditiously in regards to trying to make sure that you get the security to feel like you are safe. Because that's just one more extra added thing for people who are feeling like they don't have enough pay um, to deal with that type of thing. And so that's, it's, it's concerning because all we need is one, one event. We're all one event away from something happening. Heaven forbid that anything like that happen. But we don't want to have that on our watch and we don't want to have it so that I told you so and it still didn't happen.
And, and that's where I am now. And truthfully, thank you, Counselor. Truthfully, it is an upstairs-downstairs. There are other divisions in the Justice Building. It's an upstairs-downstairs scenario. My office is like that room that you know you need to renovate in your house, but you haven't put the money into. So you close the door hoping your guests don't notice when they come by, except guess where the public comes to first when they need to access the services of the courts. They come in my office first. And so, you know, to have these incredible employees to, but be able to do nothing for them has been untenable. Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate it.
I, I guess, you know, I don't want to belabor this too much, but I believe that the courts actually also, in addition to the bailiffs, they do use a, a contracted security resources, right? I mean, what, is it possible to maybe add hours to, to those resources and get some dedicated to the clerk's office? You know, I don't, I don't know what their contract vehicle is, but exactly how that works. But we've got what, two hundred fifty thousand in the public safety lit for uh, courts contracted. I wonder if it makes sense to add some hours to that. We have, we ought to talk to the courts and see who they use and how that works. It's just a thought. We could.
Thank you.
Buy some more resources that way.
Any other comments or questions from council on this budget? Okay, in that case, um, all in favor of accepting the clerk's general fund budget request, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Now we're at five B, which is the clerk's perpetuation.
Counsel, I move to open for Discussion and Review Fund one 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 nine zero 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 zero. Clerk's Perpetuation Fund, category requests of eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars in the personnel category, two thousand dollars in the supplies category, fifty thousand five hundred dollars in the services category for a total of one hundred thirty-three thousand dollars, pardon me, for a total of one hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Second.
Okay, could you just give us a brief update on this budget?
A very quick and brief reminder that the perpetuation fund is the fund that is used to preserve and maintain records. And it is revenue-driven, um, based on records requested of the clerk's office. Our problem is, is that that fund is in, has increasingly dwindled over the years due to um, the onset of electronic filing. Where, where we walk a fine line is that even though you can file electronically, be served electronically and all of those things, the statutes tend to get stricter and say, yeah, sure, you can let them know electronically that they have a hearing with the court, but you've got to follow it up with a mail copy. So, and then it's, it's on my dime, even though they can be served electronically. This is a fund that um, um, I don't have any problem telling on myself. I did not have a good grasp of when I first became clerk. We had one issue where we had a problem with the perpet- perpetuation fund. I promise you, I learned lessons very well. We have never had another issue since. It has continued to be in the black. It is just a fund that has dwindled and I only spend out of it sparingly um, to pay my employees and the minimal amount I can spend to um, to, to purchase the items that are needed to preserve and maintain records. We have requested an overtime line because I have a full-time employee in that budget. Um, that is helping us with our records, but I can't bear the overtime because we, we were watching that fund so carefully. We didn't realize that we didn't have an overtime line. Thank you.
Um, any questions to my left?
I just know it was difficult when uh, we worked together uh, to, to try to eliminate these overtime lines because it was uh, continuing to be a problem in many departments. Uh, so to reinstate an overtime line might just end up being problematic again because if we do it for one department, you better believe we better be doing it for the others. And so uh, I think that's something we have to think long and hard before we start that direction. And incredibly, we have to say that today, but I would be saying that no matter which.
I, I understand. Um, I'll just gently remind you, I have a manpower shortage right now and the work continues.
Right. I, I think that we have to show some flexibility and a little bit of trust in our department heads um, and elected officials with respect to overtime lines. And um, earlier this year, I know we talked about this in the office. And, you know, council can request reports on overtime and, and get reports on overtime on a regular basis to kind of keep a, keep track. And of course, right now, this one looks like it's funded at one dollar. So I'm not, you know, thinking that we've gotten crazy with it, but.
And I, you know, I am to the place where I have to beg people to help me get thing, keep things caught up. keep things caught up because of the manpower shortage. I, I have to have something that I can offer to incentivize my employees to do more than the bare minimum. I just recently learned that term quiet quitting that employees are doing because they don't feel valued. And it is not, I guarantee you, it is not because I don't value my employees. I believe any of them would tell you that.
I believe you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on this? All those in favor of accepting the clerk's perpetuation fund budget request, say aye.
Is that overtime line still in there? I can't see that.
It is.
Yes, it is. It is in there. Um, all opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes.
But you voted no, right?
What?
Did you vote no?
I did. I mean, I'd like to support, but I'm just not gonna support.
So you said you voted no. I, I was confused. So it's six, six, one. Five C, please.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund 12150010. Election fund voter registration category requests of $154,870 in the personnel category, $3,000 in the supplies category, and $34,100 in the services category for a total of $191,970. Second.
Hello. Would you like to tell us a little bit about this budget?
Wherever possible, with respect to the voter registration budget, we have attempted to hold close to previously requested amounts. Any increases are direct correlation to current or anticipated costs. An increase such as postage rates don't go down and we mail things out to voters. So services like that, again, those costs are passed on to me by the vendors.
Are there any questions to my right? Any questions on my left? All right. Then all in favor of those of accepting the clerks? Yes, ma'am, and state your name for the reference.
Yes, my name is Darla Brown and I'm an attorney and I'm here to help Clerk Brown explain to the council how we came up with the $4,000 request for the voter registration stipend. And you all follow the news, so you're aware that elections are only going to become more complicated and chaotic. And your clerk is on the front line. And she has to be more vigilant about preventing voter fraud, whether or not it's really happening, if people think it is. She has to prove that it isn't happening. And I know you've had a lengthy discussion about security. So I, I want to set aside the fact that after the last presidential election, clerks and poll workers were threatened. But in any event, the Indiana code simply states that the duties of the court clerk are to supervise the registration of the voters of the county. And that's all it says. That sounds easy. Take the paperwork, take their license. What's the problem? But some of, not all of Clerk Brown's duties as the voter registration officer not only registering the voters. Thank you. She has to clear the roles of those voters who have moved or passed away. She has to save the election records for at least 22 months. She has to update the records. She may have to keep certain documents under seal. She has to certify the election records after the election. She has to keep, maintain the rejected registration applications, any documents that she receives from the courts or the Department of Corrections or the Board of Health. She has to keep a list of the absentee ballots. She has to keeps all affidavits challenging the votes. She also has to keep appraised of new legislation regarding elections. And in fact, your clerk spent this afternoon speaking with Senator Ford of the Chair of the Elections Committee about proposed legislation regarding when and how to challenge undocumented residents so that she doesn't run afoul of civil liberties. So with those duties in mind, we attempted to come up with a number that we thought was reasonable for the voter registration stipend. Because again, the Indiana code says she's entitled to it. The Indiana code doesn't give us any guidance as to how that's to be calculated or what formula is to be used. Your clerk polled the other clerks in the state and she received 14 responses. I believe your council also did a poll and came up with similar numbers that we came up with. But in any event, to Clerk Brown's poll, 14 clerks responded. And what we were looking for are, were those counties that had the number of voter, registered voters that was similar to Monroe County. Monroe County has about 98,000 registered voters. So we were looking for counties that had that amount or higher. St. Joseph came in at 194,000 registered voters. That clerk's stipend is 47.50 a year. Hendricks County clerk receives 4,000 a year for 125,000 voters. Clark County clerk receives a stipend of almost $4,200 a year for 95,000 voters. Wells County oddly enough has 19,000 voters, but that clerk earns 4,500 a year. So we figured that Monroe County was close to Hendricks and Clark, and that's how we came up with the number for 4,000. And so I don't know if Clerk Brown has anything else to say about her duties or how they changed or what she's noticed since the last election. But thank you for hearing us out. We appreciate it.
And I will belabor that in, we, elections matter. And how much do you value the quality service that you have in Monroe County for the elections that we do? As Chair of the Legislative Committee for the Association of Indiana Clerks, I am legislating or proposing common sense legislation for all 92 clerks, not just Monroe County. But I truly believe that it is my intent every day that I go to work to set the goal standard for elections in Monroe County. But I can't do that without your support. And we are just asking what, how much value is it to you to have a smooth running election and an up-to-date voter registration list in Monroe County? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes.
So my understanding is that we're going to consider the current, the 2022 Salary Ordinance Amendment on what, the 13th? The 13th? Okay, so, I mean, it would make sense for us to, I mean, we can, we can move forward with this budget as is, but with the proviso that we're going to make a decision on that, on the 13th that would apply both for the, or we'll essentially use the same discussion to apply both for 2022 Ordinance Amendment and 2023. Does that make sense? I mean, is that, Ms. Turner King, is that your recommendation?
I think this conversation, I agree, Counselor McKim. I think this conversation is pertinent to both the salary amendment ordinance that we're considering on the 13th and tonight's discussion. So if you wanted to approve the budget with the contingency that we would pick up the voter registration conversation on that date, I think that's advisable.
I mean, we appreciate your, your comments and I think we'll take that into account when we deliberate on the 13th. Does that, does that make sense for everybody else?
I think so, yeah.
Counselor Iverson.
That, that makes sense to me and I think that's a good way forward. And if I, I could just make a real quick point and ask you a quick question. It's my understanding that there's a voter registration deadline looming in front of us. And I was, I was hoping that you could remind those watching as we're discussing this that, what that deadline is, and if folks aren't registered, how they can register to vote.
Oh, that's, that's a thank you for the opportunity.
I know. It's a tough question.
I'm just gonna pull up my calendar so that I don't get the date wrong. Because it is coming up, sir. So the last day to register to vote in Monroe County, and that's as simple as either going online at indianavoters.com and registering, or my preference would be that you come to our office at Election Central 401 West 7th Street, Suite 100. And the last day to register is Monday, October 10th, because early voting starts the next day, Tuesday, October 11th, 28 days prior to. And if you are not registered before October 10th, or before October 10th, you will not be eligible to vote in the November election. Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Yeah, it's a good time for a public service announcement.
I'm happy to give those.
Are there any other comments or questions from counsel? All right. Then, understanding that we will discuss the voter registration per DM next week. All those in favor of accepting the clerks? Where are we on here? Election fund voter registration category requests? Say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And now we move to five D.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund 12150062. Election Fund, Election Board Fund category requests of $458,172 in the personnel category, $95,000 in the supplies category, $357,000 in the services category for a total of $910,172. Second.
Hello again.
Hello again. I am pleased to be joined by at least one member of the Monroe County Election Board, but I want to make sure the council is aware that both board members received a copy of the election budget prior to this evening's meetings. As you consider the election request for what will be a municipal election year, I'm asking that you keep in mind that this is the election not only for which we will be able to charge the city of Bloomington for some of the expenses in putting on the election, but that any unexpended monies will roll back into the election war. And I am sure, I'm sorry, the election fund. I am sure that the election board members join me in appreciating and being welcome to any questions you may have about the requested funds for the election budget. Thank you.
Fantastic. Are there any questions to my right? Yes, Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, I had a question on the ballots line. It's a reduction by half and just wanted to talk about that and, and why the reduction.
The municipal election is a smaller election. Only those residents within the city of Bloomington limits are eligible to vote. So we don't need the number of ballots that we might need in, say, a presidential election where every, every registered voter is eligible to vote. Or same with the county, every county, every, when there's a county election, every registered voter can vote. So this is a smaller election. And so we don't need quite as many ballots.
And is that the same rationale for the line just above that for voting machine? That, again, that, that budget is cut in half and just, it's a smaller election.
We won't use as many voting machines now. Don't get me.
Excellent. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
I had a question because I know this will come up in a time when we're not all here. And that is polling places for next year. Do you think that for the city election, there'll be a fairly robust set of polling places for primary and general?
Yes, Counselor McKim.
So I'm, it, it looks like the estimate is that we'll get 350,000 back from the city. Is that, I mean, do you, you agree with that estimate? Looks like the auditor had a comment on that also. Okay, thank you.
Seems reasonable.
Thank, thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes, of course, we know all of these things are just projections and estimates anyway. And so the real charge will be to the city exactly what it is. It could be less, it could be more. And so, right. And I, just an FYI, when I was speaking of overtime before, and because that's in this budget, I did check because, I mean, I'm very well aware of what it takes to get an election going. You just can't, can't say, well, it's five o'clock, I'm going home now. So I understand that. And so I will support this budget with the overtime in it. And I'm told, I, I checked to see how much had been spent and out of overtime. And it was very, very reasonable. So no one taking advantage of it.
Any other questions or concerns from counsel? Okay, in that case, I move, no, I'm not moving. All those in favor of accepting election fund, the election board fund budget requests, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes the clerk's office budget review. And now we move on to item 6A with the surveyors office.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund 100000006. General Fund Surveyor Fund category requests of $201,655 in the personnel category, $550 in the supplies category, $6,500 in the services category for a total of $208,705. Second.
Hey, welcome. It seems like a lot of the microphones.
This one. Hello?
There we go. We got a winner.
Well, one, thank you so much for seeing me today. I will be going to back-to-back conferences in the next two weeks. So thanks, Michelle, for making sure that I was able to get on today's agenda. I appreciate that.
Hold it a little bit close. There you go.
So I will just go ahead and jump right. So this budget's pretty straightforward outside of one request of a salary increase based off of WISK report. I'm gonna give you just a little history. In 2016, we started to work with PAC and the council and WISK and created a professional surveyor position. At that time, we had a professional surveyor on staff in the chief deputy role, which was fixed to 75% of the elected officials. So basically, we were paying them half of what they were worth. We got away with that for six months. Then we created the position. WISK did a report in 2019. WIS did a report in 2019. That was only about 3,000 less than what they did today in 2022. So for three years, we got a steal of paying someone what I feel was not in line with they should deserved. So that's three and a half years of getting a significant discount for this type of service and expertise. If you just do a general analysis, most private surveyors make around $100,000 annually. So there's a little history there. We also work with numerous departments. One of our first roles with having a PS in the county was working with the Robertson's. We now call that the limestone greenway. We had a lot of issues. We probably would have been bogged down in courts, but instead we showed up with our orange vests and got to work, communicated to the property owners and worked out an agreement. Now we have a permanent trail there. Also, just to extend that conversation and the trail development, we worked with Indiana Limestone in Taxicon to facilitate a deal with Indiana Limestone. We basically reviewed the documents, the survey that they submitted, and found out that they were offering a land swap with the county where the land that they were wanting to swap was still in the creek at some points. So not only did we successfully navigate that, we got a route that can be developed into a permanent trail that's not in the creek. We've also worked with legal numerous times. Some of that work has fell onto new attorneys here at the county. So, you know, it'd be great to be able to catch them up to speed because there's a lot that goes behind deed records and clean title. Also, we've worked with planning. We've set up a checklist to make sure that we were getting, you know, a point of beginning bearings of basis. So like state plan coordinates. We wanted to make sure that they're putting on their on their plat, their, their basis of bearings and their projection methods. So we could use that. Just little things that are overlooked without having somebody with that type of expertise. We've walked back our review and now planning has totally taken that upon themselves, which is appropriate. We still do a significant amount of review with planning to make sure that our section corner monuments are consistent with what work is ongoing. So currently, we're tracking about 600 recorded monument records or references from surveys, and then also about 300 through the preliminary phases. That's not us going out there, you know, looking at them all. That's just us tracking them through numerous surveys being recorded and to try to prevent and mitigate potential property disputes. Currently, when we are kind of meeting the same standards, we have to launch service agreements because we don't have a PS. Those come in all shapes and sizes. I guarantee it, they're just going to continue to go up in cost because that profession is in high demand. We are waiting for two service agreements to come back, which could be quite significant. I don't want to speculate the costs, but we, I would anticipate easily about 50,000. And then after we get those back, we'll be asking for another two. So there's, there's a chance that we'll be spending, you know, upwards to 70 to $100,000 just by service agreements alone. That's let alone all the other work. That's just the work on the ground from the private company. All the administrative duties are still on our office to perform. There's things going on like a data harvest request for section corner information, first time ever. It's voluntary, but it put a lot of extra work on our staff to make sure that the data that we're providing him is the best available data that we have. That is going to be pretty, you know, interesting how that kind of continues to move because that's going to be wrapped into a significant amount of authoritative data from the state and local level. So again, the request for the raise in the PS line is based off of the WIS recommendation, which was at 79,515.5 cents. What you're seeing is the adjustment for the cost of living, which I think is fair. This should have been what we were paying that position in 2016. We have very minor other adjustments, and I'll just go through those. As known, the elected officials, they were in budget property. So that's not an increase. That's just housekeeping. Longevity, that's because we're actually retaining our employees, which is great. We got some great people in the surveyor's office. I'm absolutely thrilled. The dues line, that kind of seems like a new one, but it's not. We created the line last year, transferred the money over, forgot to budget that. So the line disappeared. We came back to council, created the line. And so this is just another kind of housekeeping order. As you can see, we're asking for 1,500 there, but we reduced 1,500 from the travel and training because those all kind of, it's just more appropriate to pay dues out of dues and traveling and training out, traveling and training. Outside of that, it's a straightforward budget. So I'm here for any additional questions. And also, due to the fact that we're entering service agreements this year, that's why I'm not here asking for amendment to the 2022 salary ordinance for this adjustment. But that gives me the start of 2023 to get out there, do a hiring blitz, and see if we can entice a professional surveyor to come to the county and work and help us, you know, achieve our goals.
Thank you. That was interesting. Do we have questions on my right? Yes, Councilor Munson.
Mr. Inright Randolph, thank you for your presentation and the information you presented about the professional surveyor and the services that you say that you need. If you don't find a professional surveyor to take a position, will you be having a services contract with the surveyor?
That's what we're currently doing to, and then to expand on that question is if we can't bring the surveyor in in 2023, we'll be back to PAC to discuss kind of what the surveyor's office needs are in staffing and reassess and adjust.
I just did not see in the service, services category funds for.
That's all in the corner fund.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay.
The surveyor position is split, so it's kind of.
Yes, I see 75% is what's in this.
Right.
General fund. Okay.
So again, I'm doing my best to relieve the county general. So I don't come every year to ask for out-of-category transfer of that personnel to pay for service agreements out of county general. I'm fine with relieving the burden that the general has, and I am using my section corner funds, but that will not be sustainable.
Okay.
Do I have questions to my left?
I mean, I guess really the only, the only question about this budget, I mean, it's very, it is very simple. Our question is if we want to go along with the list recommendation for, for the professional surveyor. I mean, I know you've not been able to hire one at a lower salary. So I certainly think it's, it's justified. You know, the only, I guess the only other question is, do we do we budget lower for it because you might not be able to find one January 1st? And then come back for an additional if you actually do manage to hire one? Or are you trying, I mean, what, what's your, your schedule, I guess, for hiring that position?
There's still several months left in this year. So if I feel like I have the ability to say, hey, we're going to have a higher set salary, that allows me to spread word of mouth. I don't think surveyors are looking on like Indeed, for instance, you know, so ultimately, earlier today, if I had the support of the council tonight, I couldn't talk about this at a presentation that I'll be doing in November.
I'm okay with it as is.
Any other questions? Comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one more question. So in, you basically have not spent anything out of that line this year. Is that right?
Except for the additional appropriation, we were supposed to come back for the elected officials. We did an in-house transfer to make up that difference because.
Oh, that's how you handle it.
Right. But yes, outside of that, we, like I promised council, I'd leave that as is.
Okay. Okay.
So it's just going to be setting back here, come back into at the end of the year if he doesn't use it.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Um, all right, all those in favor of accepting the surveyor's general fund budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Motion passes. And we move to 6B.
Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund 12020000, surveyors' corner perpetuation category requests of $75,234 in the personnel category, $6,550 in the supplies category, and $59,450 in the services category for a total of $141,234.
Second.
All right, do you want to give us a little update on this?
So yes, this is pretty straightforward. Again, you see the increase, and that's due to the fact that the PS is split between the two funds. We have a placeholder for the part-time for a dollar. We like to kind of keep that there just in case. Due to the, the fact that we haven't had a PS, we are, you know, spending more of our field assistant part timeline and, but we're able to kind of do an in-house transfer. I guess I should really clarify that this is a dedicated fund and it's non-reverting. So we just moved some of the money from the PS line into the part-time line to kind of make up that. So we're comfortable where we're at. We did ask for an increase of 10,000 out of the geodetic control. That's where we pay our service agreements. But we also have a bounty or, sorry, it's more commonly known as a bounty, but it's a corner documentation program where surveyors that are doing work for their clients, their private clients, go above and beyond the work that they're asked, which basically means they go through the corner documentation program, and they give us geodetic controls in a tie sheet record, and we pay them for that service. So something that's really neat, kind of having gotten through a few service agreements, our approved standard form is the same as the corner documentation program. So through both of the firms that we worked with, through the service agreements, they have actually went through the documentation program now too. So that's kind of exciting to kind of see that thing start being taken advantage of. There's, there's a lot to that. It's not just putting the money there and creating, you know, how we're, the pay scale and getting that approved through the commissioners and all of that. It's also promoting and educating surveyors to take advantage of it. So it's, 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 it's growing and it's, I feel, being more and more successful. So that's, that's great. So I open it up to any questions.
Any questions to my left?
Yes, not so much question, just I see that you did manage to get the 4B updated with the correct or with, with the, I gotta say, more accurate estimates of revenue coming in. So that all looks good.
Yes, and thanks. We talked the other day and council member McKim caught irregular number there and worked with Ken Shell and Bree and Audrey to the office, and we got the outfit. So thank you, Ken, Mr. McKim, that could have caused some confusion.
Great. Are there questions to my right? All right. And in that case, all those in favor of accepting surveyor's corner perpetuation budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will go back at the end.
He asked me to do his budget recorder. If you want me to, I can. He's not sure he'll be well next week, or you can just put it at the end. His budget is very easy. I lose his liaison. Jeffrey, you recorder's liaison, do you have any issue with that? Do you have any issue with that?
I'm the liaison for the reporter. I don't have any issue with the, with the budget, but we did take it off the agenda. So.
Well, let's, if, if we do it, let's do it at the end because we have a lot of folks.
That's what I was saying. We'll do it, we'll do it at the end. And so we will move to item eight, which is public defender.
Counsel, I moved to open for discussion and review fund 10000271, general fund, public defender category requests of $1,557,514 in the personnel category, $9,000 in the supplies category, $138,051 in the services category, for a total of $1,704,565.
Second.
Welcome. Good to see you.
I think he's on mute. No, no, other button. Now turn the, now the other one to make it green. You want it all green. There you go.
Okay, we okay now?
Yes.
Okay.
Much better.
I'll start again. Madam Chairperson, members of the council, my name is Michael Hunt from the Public Defender's Office. On my left, I have Heather Stuffle. She's my executive assistant. And on my right, I have Joseph Lozano, who's a prominent local attorney and a member of the Public Defender Board that is in charge of the office, basically. The budget we've submitted, I believe pretty much follows this year's budget. There's only a couple of exceptions, and one of them is in the 17100 line transcripts. We have increased that for a couple of reasons. And this and the other one that I'll talk about are best estimates or guestimates. When you have a trial or hearing, whether it's before a judge or a jury, and you lose as a defense attorney, the client has the right to appeal if they so desire. The judge tells them that, advises them with that, and it doesn't cost them anything. So normally, they wish to appeal because they're not losing anything. And they still have the hope that an appellate court will change their sentence or reverse the, the decision. We've had not a lot of trials in the last couple of years because of COVID, but we have had juvenile hearings. And there are a couple of types of those. One is called a CHINS, which is children in need of services. And the other is, well, delinquency is another one. But the other one is where they can take the children from people. That one is a one that almost all people want to appeal if they lose because they're losing their children. We've had a number of those, and when you appeal, what you do is submit a request to the court, and the court reporter types up the record. These are all recorded, just like we're recording now, and they have to type up everything. We pay those court reporters to do that. They, they do it in their non-office time. And those have increased. I think we have roughly approximately 13 appeals going right now. Which is an increase over the past. I will say that. I'm even seriously thinking about trying to maybe form a, an appellate unit. Because we're getting to the point where we just have enough that we could do that. But but that's the increase in that cost. The second one is down on thirty two, seven, ten special services. That category covers experts that we hire, depositions that we do for trial, anything extra that you need for a trial, whether it's a eyewitness identification expert, whether it's a fingerprint expert. Whatever. And we've had a case, I was gonna say recently, but it's probably two or three years old at least. Which is called LWOP. Which is life without parole. And that's like the next most serious thing to a murder charge. And a lot of murder charges in these cases that life without parole are filed. The evidence is let's say so overwhelming for the state that what the defense attorneys are trying to do is mitigate punishment for the defendant. In other words, either cut the time down some or not get them, get them a chance to have a parole twenty or thirty years. And the appellate courts have told us on those type of cases that you pretty much need to hire a mitigation expert, someone that can look into this person's background and bring out everything good about them. Not just that they're a terrible person because they committed this crime, but their, their life history. They had drug problems. They're, they were, didn't have any parents when they were growing up. They had juvenile problems. They had mental problems. Their education got all messed up, so they didn't go to school for very long. Whatever you can show, or they were a good parent to their children and they got in trouble. But those experts cost money. And so we had this case and it's just about to finish, I would say. And that bill is going to hit us. We've already paid part of it, but and we try to limit that, but this is a bill that's accrued over two or three years. And so we're going to get hit with that now. So we increased that by, I think, forty thousand dollars for next year on the hopes that that would cover what's remaining. I don't know that because I haven't looked at the person's bill submission. They haven't submitted them lately. And like I say, it's just wrapping up. So those two things are the ones that are big increases. And again, if the council doesn't see fit to increase it that much, I can come back when I get the bill, but as I said, that's our best estimate or guess. And that's, having said that, I don't think I have anything else unless people have questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions on my right? Nope. Okay. Hello.
I know what a surprise. And actually, maybe this is just the way we're seeing the data, but it looks to me like the biggest increases in is in personnel. A really substantial increase. And so I'm wondering if there's something that's maybe not right about the spreadsheet or something. There are, there are several positions that are in this fund this year that appear, appear to not have been in this fund in the past. I don't know if that's intentional or.
There are two and they're new lines that got switched.
Because.
They were under an old line and I think they were renamed maybe.
I'm just seeing that the, the personnel budget for 2022 is showing up as one million two hundred eighty five thousand nine hundred twenty three. Michelle, do you, do you agree with that?
Yes.
And this year I showed as one million five hundred fifty seven thousand. So that's what percentage.
Oh, I see. Yes.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's a twenty one percent increase.
Part of it is there's the, there was the addition of a deputy public defender and it looks like she's got part of it that has a grant attached to it.
Okay, okay. I can explain that part.
Yeah. And then, and then I think there were percentage increases due to the the increase of the public defender as well as the chief deputy.
Sure. I would expect, but you know, when, since we, we were talking about a five percent COLA, we expect most departmental personnel budgets to increase between about four and six percent. And this has gone up twenty one percent. So.
On the one person, we did have a grant and I, as you recall, I think last year we had to come to you because like at the last minute in July, I think they notified and it's a grant through the probation department, but it's for an attorney. They notify us and instead of giving us sixty or seventy thousand dollars, we would get fifteen thousand for that item. So we came and the council provided the balance of that. We put that in there. And that's under one twenty one fifty five, forty eight thousand, and then fifteen more is for, they gave us fifteen again this year. So the fifteen is added on to that. But so that is the only real increase that I know of. We didn't add any other people.
Okay. I still don't then, then I still don't understand why the overall.
This is the insurance. Looks like it went up quite a bit more than some the other departments.
And they came to us and it's like a special program that they were going to have. It's going to last, what, three years? They came and somebody else came to make the presentation and can't remember.
That was a grant.
That shouldn't be in here.
No, that, yeah, that's not in here.
Right.
Did they move?
No.
I don't know. Are you, I mean, it might be self, self insurance.
Let's see.
That is a big jump.
That is a very big jump. So clearly there are positions included in this fund this year that were not included in this fund last year.
Heather, did you take the the health insurance and do the percentages for those? And that's still what you came up with?
Yeah, that's a
That's it.
How, how many, how much is that? How much is the health insurance per person?
It's a twelve thousand per position.
Yeah, okay, twelve thousand. So this is like four position, additional positions that are reflected in the health insurance. And that also makes sense that there are additional positions reflected in this fund. Yeah, I.
Why are they all in here to summon the supplemental?
Yeah, that's exactly it. I, this, I feel like this needs to be sorted out. I mean, I, yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the, the special services or transcripts. I did have a question about the transcripts, but I guess this is, this is a bigger issue because it's, you know, like a three hundred thousand dollar increase.
Well, the special services that we were told, been told before, that sometimes that's even for buying clothing or something for the is this correct? For the defendant to be able to present themselves well in court is what we were told.
I can't hear a word you're saying. The, the sound system in here.
I mean. I think, I think a few years ago, we were told that under special services, there's a lot of different things, but one could be that to make sure that that defendant had proper attire to go to court. And so you had some, is that, as I recall it? And is that the line item that would be paid for out of, okay, I just want to make sure it's remembered.
I think that's far outweighed by the expert one. Ninety thousand buys a lot of outfits. Does anyone have any other questions? That set aside. You have the transcript.
Yeah, just the other question about the transcripts. It looks like in the past transcripts have been under services. So done as a contract and now they're under personnel. Is that?
Yeah, we were told to change that. So we did.
Beginning of this year, I think, and created pig roll line. Since the court quarters are county employees.
Okay, so you have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Questions, comments? No? Okay, so.
Actually.
Yes.
But I, Michelle, are you working on this, the personnel category?
Yes, I'm trying to do a quick with the percentages that she's got in here with regards to the health insurance. So I'm trying to check that real quick.
Okay.
But it isn't just the health insurance. I mean, health insurance is a symptom, not, not the cause.
But I'm going to start there. So, because since that is such a huge increase.
Should we table this? I just don't know how long.
Actually, I would, I would like to spend some time tomorrow looking at it. And then if we could like look at this again, probably like I think we have time like on the third, not the thirteenth, the fourteenth or the fifteenth.
Okay.
To revisit the public defender.
Sure.
I, you know, I don't, I don't think we'd, we need everybody to come and
Right.
Make a new presentation. This is really just kind of figuring out percentages more than.
Yeah, just to kind of make sure we got it all straight.
And then that will give you a chance to work with Heather and we can figure out what's going on.
Okay. Can I address a question of transcripts that you had? If they would hire an outside agency to do a transcript, it would be in services. But if it's in-house or a person who works here, we have no choice.
Right.
Yeah, I got.
I remember that now.
Yeah.
So.
So counsel, I move we table this budget to the, a, a date to be determined based on. What?
Okay.
Okay, we'll do it at the earliest possible time after the issue is resolved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to tables, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes and we'll see you. You do not have to come back. That's, I mean, it's fine. We've heard what you had to say. I think the things that you presented make sense. We don't have questions on those. So this Kim will let you know if, if a Zoom maybe is needed, but.
I didn't hear you.
The tw- she asked about the twelve hundred. Do we need to do a B next?
Well, let's go ahead and do it so they can present the case and then we don't have, they don't have to do it again.
Oh, that's me. That's you. You say so.
Me, yes. Counsel, I moved open for discussion and review fund one two zero 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 zero. Public Defender Supplemental Fund category requests of one million one hundred twenty three thousand eight hundred forty dollars in the personnel category for a total of one million one hundred twenty three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
This is primarily from the funds we received in the state and it's primarily salaries. The only thing, and I do notice in looking at this on the self-insurance again, that went, that went down this year. So why the other one went up so much? I don't know. We'll try to figure that out, but that's the only thing that I see of that.
Okay. Are there questions specific to this budget?
I, I guess the, the overall question is your intention is not to particularly be moving personnel between these funds, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, we just need to make the math work.
Okay. Questions on this side? Right. You want to?
Counsel, I move we table this, this budget and here at the reconsiderer, at the same time, we reconsider the public defenders general fund.
Second.
All in favor of tabling the public defender supplemental fund, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
May I just ask one question? It's not about this budget.
Okay.
About overall funding from the state. Have you heard any updates as far as this fund remaining sound or more dollars going into a, what?
Yeah, I, I think by now it's, it's funded, fully funded. We continue to try through the legislative process and with the Public Defender Commission and with the chief public defenders to get the state to reimburse us for misdemeanors, which would be a big help. They, and they haven't convinced them yet. They are also trying because the salaries of the chiefs and the chief deputies are, are connected or related to judicial salaries and prosecutor salaries. But the retirement for those, for the public defenders is not. And so they're trying to work that in their, they're having the I can't forget what it's called. It's a commission in the legislature that studies bills and studies how much they'll cost. So they're, they're running it through there. I don't know if that will happen or not. But that won't really affect the county and it's just trying to make parity between the chiefs and the prosecutors. So the big one for us is the misdemeanors and we're still working on that and I can't tell you about.
And are you receiving assistance with the juvenile issues? It wasn't that a problem last year? That you were not being, that they were not covering that with the supplemental, with the juvenile.
Oh, juveniles. On certain ones, we did, we did get extra money for what?
Grant. So it's called a, a title four grant. And they we were normally getting paid reimbursed forty percent for the chins and the termination and this grant supplements to reimburse a hundred percent.
And that, we got to check for that for how much?
I think it was about nine thousand dollars.
So that.
And we'll get them quarterly.
But that, that helps.
Thank you. I think we are good and thank you very much.
Do you want to, want us to come back a certain time or anything?
No, you don't need to come back. We'll, we'll hear it. I mean, if, if we need something, Ms. Kim will let you know. But I think that would be, you know.
We'll look at it and see what we can find. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine A correctional center.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one zero 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 three eight zero. General Fund Jail category requests of five million four hundred thirty three thousand three hundred twenty three dollars in the personnel category, one hundred seventy nine thousand three hundred eleven a dollars in the supplies category, one million two hundred one thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars in the services category for a total of six million eight hundred fourteen thousand four hundred fifty two dollars.
Second.
Welcome. It's good to see you.
I know it's a never ending battle for, to be here and be heard in this room.
We're so sorry.
I have a problem with this every year. So hopefully this is good. So I'm going to try to be pretty brief on this because I know we're running behind. With our general fund, I will go through the things that we have asked for additional money for, for this. With our general fund, I will go through the things that we have asked for additional money for, for this next year or things where we found changes. The first changes that I noticed today was in line one six zero seven zero and one six zero seven one. When we noticed this, I contacted Kirsten, we contacted Michelle. I also let Councilman Munson know about this. That should be three thousand instead of forty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-three on both lines.
Big difference.
So we want to stay with the three thousand and not the other. And then that will also have effect on insurance, five cap per those, those lines that go with it. With overtime, as you are all aware, we have had an issue with staffing at the jail and we have used a lot of overtime this year. So we have asked for an additional amount, an additional twenty thousand dollars to go into the overtime for next year, just in case. And just a little update, we are currently six people down. I think we're going to lose one more person soon. And we have the potential of hiring a former employee back. So that will help, you know, it, it offsets one another. But that actually benefits us because we don't have to go through the five weeks of training with a new officer that we would have to with someone else. So. The other thing that we have asked for a little increase in is one seven two zero eight uniforms. We've asked for an additional three thousand dollars. And that's just because prices went up. Our local supplier has went out of business. So we were having to travel to Indianapolis to get our uniforms now. And fortunately, prices are a little bit higher in Indianapolis. And then with the general cost of living increases, shipping concerns, things like that, the prices went up. Longevity, one seven six zero one. There are two officers or two staff members in the correctional center that's still receiving longevity check, myself and the assistant jail commander. The assistant jail commander is up for his bump. So that's why we've increased that for two hundred dollars. Two thousand, one zero zero fuel. We've asked for an additional two hundred and fifty dollars. Again, the cost of fuel has greatly went up. And we are still doing the same amount of transports, if not more, as we've always done. Two four zero, or excuse me, two four two zero zero, operational supplies. Again, just increases in everything right now. Two four four zero zero inmate clothing. We've asked for an additional three hundred dollars there. Three four one zero zero medical supplies. Our contract with advanced correctional healthcare, they have went up three point two seven percent. So that's where that additional money comes from there. And that's a yearly increase. Generally, it's two to three percent. This year, it's a little bit higher. Three four ones, one zero. Video imaging, labor and parts increase. And unfortunately, our cameras, our camera systems, technology, you know, we have to adjust to the new technology. Older technology is starting to go out. So we're having some issues. We're having to replace cameras. We're having to replace or repair video systems or video recording systems. And that's vital to the jail as far as our safety and security issues. So we've asked for that to go up a little bit as well. And then three four three zero zero, communication repairs and services, an additional two thousand dollars. That's generally for our radios. And we have to have our radios to be able to communicate from one area to another because of the vast area that we cover. So we asked for a two thousand dollar increase in that. And those are the changes that we have asked for in the general fund. Now, there's something else that we have talked about. Ms. Munson and I have talked about, and that is removing some of the items out of three hundred line to the misdemeanor fund. And I don't know if that's something we need to discuss right now or if we need to discuss that with the misdemeanor fund.
Let's talk about it now. That'd be great.
So I would like to move, we have a, a large amount of money in the misdemeanor fund. And that's a non-reverting fund. We can't move that money from one place to another. We have to use it. But there is a large amount of money there. So I would like to move everything in the three hundred line with the exception of three four one zero zero to the misdemeanor fund and that will total one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And I think we'll be able to do that for a couple of years. And then at some point, we might have to move the three zero zero two five maintenance line for forty-five thousand. At some point in time, I think we, we will have to move that. But I think we probably got enough for two to three years to run it with all these items in there before we run out of that surplus money. And those are all the changes that I would bring to your attention under County General.
So everything in services, is that?
Except the medical contract.
Except medical.
Except the medical contract. I assume Councilor Munson has a, a motion, is gonna make a motion on that one.
So I move. We transfer. I have to do the line numbers. Is that correct? I have to read the line numbers. And we transfer the following lines to the misdemeanor fund in the services category there. Three zero zero two five, three zero zero two eight, three one three eight oh. Three four one one zero, three four one five oh, three four one seven oh, three four three zero zero, three four four zero zero and three four eight zero zero for a total of a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just thanks to Councilor Munson for catching this. Good idea.
It's a great idea. All those in favor of the motion to move the lines as stated to the misdemeanor fund, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay, are there, are, are we good with that presentation? Can we ask you questions now?
Yes.
All right. Other questions to my left? Ms. Counselor Hawk?
Right, yes, under operational supplies, is that where the food money comes from? Remind me where, where you get the food money?
No, that would, the operational supplies is things like toilet paper.
Right, let's not forget that. For those of us who were around at the time.
We don't need another skid on Saturday night.
Right.
Basically, it's the general operating, it could be paper, it could be toilet paper. Could be the hygiene items that we give out to our inpatient inmates.
I'm just looking for the meals.
Yeah, it's in the.
People really care about getting fed.
It's the public safe, it's in the public safety, right, lit.
Oh, is it? Okay, I was, I, I knew I'd seen it, but I couldn't find, okay, thanks. Yes, let's, let's make sure we keep the toilet paper necessary because there could be a shortage, we hear.
I hope not. But yes, we try to, we make sure that's done every week.
Right. And then I want to share with you also a concern from a constituent. I, I don't have it written down. I wish I had so I could be saying it explicitly. He's concerned that for someone to be able to call out that it's, it takes, it comes from whatever money they have and then there's a disconnect because there's no way to contact family or something. I, I'm, I'm sure I'm not conveying that correctly. I didn't write it down. I just want you to look at that because he's very concerned that that's not a fair thing to do to the inmates. So just sharing that because I told him I would.
We have three different means that the inmates can communicate with the outside. We have telephone calls, we have the video visits. And then we also make sure that they have, if they can't afford, we will give them paper, pencil, envelopes and postage. So they can write out to people and communicate still. So there is a way for them to communicate. It's just, they have to take the, the initiative to do that.
So they don't have to have money to have a phone conversation with a family member at set times, whatever.
No, they have to have money on the phones, but there is another means for them to communicate. So they can write letters.
Okay, so they can't speak in person, but they can write a letter.
Right.
Let's hope that the people having trouble communicating can actually write a letter. I'm just like.
Counsel, I move we set line one six zero seven zero to three thousand dollars and line one six zero seven one to three thousand dollars.
Second.
Oh. Are there any questions on this motion? All in favor of setting the lines as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Are there other questions for the jail commander on this budget? Yes, Peter Anderson?
Yeah, on the line for locks, I think it's, it's in the, the two hundreds there. I know there was a, a time you came before us with a pretty scary situation where the locks weren't quite working on the doors. And I just, that's not the same line that those, those funds come in from. Is that correct? I mean, that said it like three hundred and fifty dollars.
No, generally, the, the locking devices on the doors will come out of the maintenance line.
Okay. All right. And so what's that line?
Yeah.
Is that like locks for lockers or?
Yes. There are times when we have to change door locks, whether they wear out, the, the tumbling devices inside. So that's just a, a small line for those types of locks.
Okay. Yeah, as soon as I read that, I was thinking, oh, gosh, I hope we're not, you know, spending that much on the, the doors, but thank you for the clarification.
Are there any other questions on this budget?
Do we have updated?
Tell you.
All right. If we're ready, I think I can restate this. All right, we're gonna try it again. In fund one thousand, zero three eight zero, we've got five million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars in the personnel category. One hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars in the supplies category. We've got one million. All right, the eyes are going here. One million. Is there, one million, eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars in the services category for a total of six million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
That's the old number.
Sorry, that's not changed there. Six million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars total.
All those in favor of accepting the 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 general fund jail category requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So now we move to public safety.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one one seven zero zero three eight zero, public safety lit jail, category requests of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars in the personnel category, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the services category for a total of nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second. We have asked for no changes for next year's budget in this line and this category. And this is also where the mills for prisoners are at, three four seven zero zero. And I think right now we are operating in a good number with that. Every year, the State Board of Accounts looks at that figure as far as how much we have to base our meals on. And it has recently went up, so we are at a dollar and thirty-one cents per meal. Whereas it was a dollar and twenty-four dollar, twenty-five per meal.
All right, any questions about this? Yes.
And this isn't actually about the budget, as I should have asked it before, but you were talking about having six, about six vacancies right now, plus or minus one. And that's a lot better than it was a month ago, wasn't it? Two months ago. Or two months ago. We were up to twelve, twelve, I can see. So we've really had a few officers that have done an exceptional job of reaching out to people. Trying to communicate the job openings, get the word out there that we are looking for people. So we've had six hires in the past two months. And they're coming two at a time, two to three at a time. But when we can get two people, we'll put on a class. When we can get one person, we'll put on a class and start getting those people in there. And the six people that we have hired has made a difference. That's great. Now, I'm glad to hear that's at least moving in the right direction, even though I know it's still a struggle.
Any other questions or comments about the budget?
It's just amazing that you can provide the kind of meals that I'm told that's being provided at these prices. Makes me want to come visit, not stay, but.
We have an open invitation anytime you would like to come over. All of you do. I still remember last time I went there and I got to taste the food. It was excellent.
Eric Spurmore still talks about.
Anytime you want to come over, we will be more than happy to let you sample our cuisine.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the jail's public safety lit budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review fund one one seven five zero 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 misdemeanor fund. Category requests of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars in the services category for a total of twenty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
This one is different than what's on the paper.
This one is different than what is on paper. The three items that were originally there, we have not asked for any increases from the twenty-twenty-two adopted budget.
Okay. Contractual, I'm sorry, I didn't ask if anybody had any questions. I just jumped into mine. Could you describe contractual?
There are certain things that we have going on in the jail. They're contracts from year to year. So we use this line to pay those annual contractual fees. Then inmate education is our adult education where we partner with Monroe County School Corporation. It's one of the longest-running and a very productive program at the jail. We're currently doing SERB safe. And it's again, a very popular program with the inmates. Last, I think it's four weeks, it might be six weeks, but we'll do one group, six weeks, and then we'll rotate from like male to female. So we're giving the entire jail the opportunity to take that. And again, it is a very popular program. And then we also have the law library where we provide deals. The inmates opportunity to look up legal material if they're representing themselves.
How well utilized is the law library?
It is, it is well utilized. And we have everything that is necessary for an inmate to defend themselves. We've actually talked to the judges to get, to make sure that the, the information that's in there is adequate for them to defend themselves. So. And it's something that you would find attorneys in town using, you know, the same type of information.
Yes.
Do I need a motion to add those lines in?
I think it's implied. Oh, wait, there are new lines.
You took, you removed them from the general fund.
Well, I did say move them.
She actually said transfer.
Did she say, okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that.
Good.
For the record, Kim. For the record, Kim is doing that.
I could ask more questions.
Please.
All right, awesome, slow. The the contractual line, that's the line where community programming, is that where that goes in now?
No, this is more if we have to update something for video visitation.
Oh, okay, all right.
Something along that lines, it's those types of contracts where we generally have annually, annual updates, service agreements, something like that. Yeah, body scanner, fingerprint machines, you know, something along that line where we we have to do upgrades, things like that.
Okay, all right.
Are there other questions?
I have one while we're waiting on the update. How often are hearings happening remotely with video conferencing now? I know that I I saw the system when I was over there, but I know that things are maybe going back to normal or.
As far as the courts are going, yes, we don't utilize our video courts much anymore. A lot of the judges like to have those hearings in person.
How did the how do the inmates feel about that? They nobody asked.
I I don't think there's much input from the inmates, whether it's video or in person. They probably prefer person because they get to go down to the courtroom and their friends, family members can be in the audience. Which poses a threat, but but I think they like that because they get the opportunity, even if we tell them not to talk to the inmate, they're gonna talk to him, I love you, well kisses, try to give hugs, things like that.
Sure, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Any other questions or comments? I've done all I can, Kim, yes.
I have a comment while we're waiting for Michelle, she's still calculating, but it it was a pleasure to work with Commander Crowe and with Kirsten on this. Excuse me. And they came up with the good ideas to move these expenses into the misdemeanor fund.
Yeah, that's really appreciated.
If I could say one other thing, this question always comes up generally by Commissioner or Counselor Hawk. The misdemeanor fund is supplied every year. So the payment that we receive is eighty thousand nine hundred and twenty three dollars and eighty seven cents. We are to receive that by September first. So we have already received it, but for some reason it doesn't get to us and it's hard for us to track.
Right.
So all of that is under that chapter eleven of the Indiana Code, which tells how it's supposed to get to us. But we generally have to try to track that down. And I don't think it's really anyone's fault, but there's been some confusion in past years as to when it's supposed to be here, where it's at, and we've generally had to track it down before, so.
So it's a once a year operation, probably in the auditor's office, I'm looking at our auditor Smith, who's.
I'm not sure where it goes to. And how it's distributed.
Could you say that in the mic just?
Believe that one time they were over spent because money hadn't been placed.
Right, that's. What were you saying?
Oh, it's supposed to be a direct deposit into the misdemeanor fund. And for some reason, the last couple of years, when they started, it ends up in the Sheriff's Department. So it's not far from us.
Not far, but it still doesn't count. Okay.
And one other thing I'll say is, I think our current balance in that that line or that budget is I don't have the exact figure, but it's at the beginning of the year, it was a hundred and thirty three thousand three hundred and ten dollars. So I I think quite a bit of that money is still in there, like a hundred and twenty thousand, and I don't have the exact figure. One hundred and sixteen thousand. So we'll have that hundred and sixteen thousand and then the eighty thousand nine hundred and thirty three, which gives us that surplus that we can run off of for a little while.
So we want to keep in mind that a balance in there is a good idea. Even though we're using some of it, because you have expenses perhaps before September first or whenever the money finds you, got it. How's it going over there? All right.
I'm trying very hard to stay in my allotted time of thirty minutes.
It's ready to go.
All right, and I've been able to zoom in, I figured out how to do it on my computer, so my eyes will do better. Here we, maybe, here we go. In Fund one one seven five zero 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 misdemeanor fund, we've got in the services category one hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred dollars for total of one hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred dollars.
All those in favor of accepting the misdemeanor fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Excuse me, councilors, but it is Sam's fiftieth birthday?
Today?
Is it, is today your birthday, is it number fifty? I think the county council should sing happy birthday to you.
This is the second year in a row that we've had budget hearings on my birthday, so I just want you to know how devoted I am to the county.
We came to your party. I hope they baked you a cake today.
To you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Commissioner. Happy birthday to you.
Week gets better from here.
That was great, thanks guys. Highlight of the evening.
Thank you.
And now we have our last office of the evening, the sheriff's office.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund one thousand zero 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 five, general fund sheriff. Category requests of five million, seventy six thousand three hundred forty six dollars in the personnel category. Two hundred and eighty five thousand seven hundred and one dollars in the supplies category. One hundred sixty seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars in the services category for a total of five million, five hundred twenty nine thousand six hundred and sixty, six hundred and sixty seven dollars.
Second.
Welcome, it's good to see you.
You're on mute, just turn the red button off.
There we go.
Yeah.
I come to you for a final time for the budget. Yesterday, I woke up in Mexico, so my post-vacation afterglow in your hands, how we go today. And as I've said before, most of this budget is set with contracts that are multi-year at times. And my financial manager, Mr. McLaughlin is with me. And I think as requested, the budget is pretty much the same as next year, that way I won't be giving my successor any benefits that I didn't enjoy when I took office. We do have in the data analyst position, a little bit of an adjustment because the new hire for that position has been a long time county employee. And Scott, if there's anything else that.
It'll just need to be changed from the one year to an eight year pay. The data analyst be one five one six zero.
Do you have other explanation before we?
I'm sorry.
Do you have anything else before we start asking?
No, I'd like to do this in record time if we can.
All right, are there questions for the sheriff? Questions or comments, yes, Mr. McKim.
I'm trying to similar issue with the the public defender, maybe I'm I'm reading something wrong, but let's see, the the full-time self-insurance. Okay, no, I I was reading it wrong, sorry, the sheriff's pension, I guess, it does appear that the sheriff's pension went up quite a bit.
If there any, is it just what the actuaries say, that's? With that and then retirements and pensions that are going out.
Yeah, there are some, we have a medical retirement coming up and other people have retired after many years of service. So what they're paying out is changing, ever-changing, and of course, with salary increases through the collective bargaining, those things affect the investments, or I'm sorry, they invest what is paid out and what needs to be paid into the fund to keep it sound. I am working with the merit board, which serves as the pension board with Gelsor, which is the firm that handles the investments. We have another meeting to make a decision on investment strategies, this day and age, they're wanting to do some things that are, have not been a traditional way of investing in a way of drawing a couple of extra percentage points on what they anticipate. And of course, by allowing the fund to try and perform better, that's just that much less financial obligation to the taxpayers. So we are going to have another meeting this month and make a decision on which way that investment strategy will go. So we do pay attention to how well our fund is being managed, because the better it does, less obligation upon the council.
Okay, thanks, and of course, I also just want to call attention to the pretty substantial increase in the fuel line, I don't think that comes as a surprise to anybody. And I know that you're coming for us for an additional appropriation for this year for fuel as well, all right. Yeah, not much we can do about that.
Three new officers hired with bachelor's degrees, I'm looking at the supplemental for education. So it says three new officer bachelors, and I'm wondering, are those new hires?
Correct.
Got it.
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, one question, remind me, that crossing, it it's one crossing guard position, right?
Yes.
Is that for Grandview?
Grandview.
And so I thought, thank you very much.
Yes.
And what what do your vacancies look like right now?
I'm sorry.
What what do your vacancies look like right now?
I just had a submission today, we're looking, we anticipate maybe nine down. We are going through background checks on some applicants, one was a past deputy, who would almost be plug and play, but Lieutenant Troy Thomas retired, who's been with it since he was an explorer, and others have just chosen to return to previous places that they worked or seek out personal opportunities that they think their businesses could expand if they could dedicate their time to that. Found nationally, and it it seems to apply here, that present generation of police officers, generally when they leave an agency, it's for quality of life. And I know a couple have left because their spouses complain about the shift work and they look for something more traditional to be home. And that's what we've generally found to be true, so those decisions are based on improvement in their quality of life. As they see it, I think some probably regret the decisions, but it's part of life's lessons.
Right.
Was there an amendment to his request to up from a one year to an eight? On the data analyst? It's money. Right, to amend.
I'm still looking, I'm just looking for the line, what's the line?
One five one six zero.
So an eight year? Okay, counsel, I move we amend line one five one six zero to the eight year level. Just to the eight year. He's got it in here as a one year, but it's but it's an eight year.
Somebody second.
Second.
Anybody have concerns, questions? Discussion sidebar? All right, all those in favor of the motion to change the line as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Do we have any other questions or comments on the budget?
Just what is that difference?
Yeah, four thousand seven hundred dollars. I do have, is this like a person sliding from one department to another? Court, okay, I just wanted to make sure, so.
All right, any other questions or comments, and we'll probably need an updated number, right?
Yep, we're personnel, correct?
Yes.
In.
Would you like to tell us a story?
Madam President.
Yes.
With our new system, we're going to have to advise department heads to to be prepared to to fill in the time by relaying interesting anecdotes about their department. Or or something else.
It's ready. Tell us a joke.
Interpreted my book, remind you, this is way it was back in the day, and we were all sitting here with a little hand.
Yeah, the adding machine.
Well, I did that, but over here, we would joke.
All right, I'm gonna restate for Fund one thousand zero 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 five, general fund sheriff. Category requests of in the personnel category, five million, eighty two thousand seventy four dollars in the supplies category, two hundred and eighty five thousand seven hundred and one dollars in the services category. One hundred sixty seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars for a total of five million, five hundred thirty five thousand three hundred ninety five dollars.
All those in favor of accepting the sheriff's general fund budget requests as stated, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, and we move to ten B, animal control.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund one thousand zero six two six, general fund animal control. Category requests of one hundred forty thousand six hundred and seventy two, seventy two dollars in the personnel category. Fifteen thousand twenty dollars in the supplies category. Three hundred fifty four thousand four hundred sixty seven dollars in the services category for a total of five hundred ten thousand one hundred fifty nine dollars.
Second.
We have three animal management officer positions. I have one retirement, who's a longtime county employee and served in that position for several years, and the person that we're looking at to fill that position is a non-county employee for transferring, so there may be a little. We're transferring, so there may be a little bit of money left over at the end of the year because we had a very senior employee there versus a brand-new Monroe County government employee. I think that's all I have to update on that.
Did you say three? Thank you. Are there any questions? Questions on this side?
Well, actually, that, that brings up a good point. I mean, I, I don't know that we want to mess around with the budget this year, but might, might it make sense to put the, in the future, put that animal management officer in this budget and then swap out, share a merit deputy from general fund into lit, just so all the animal management functions is in one budget? Yeah, just thought.
Special since it was animal over time.
She likes animal over time.
My dog was like that.
Work hard. Other questions or comments? All right. Then, all in favor of accepting the sheriff's animal control general fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are on to the public safety list.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 11700005, public safety lit sheriff, category requests of one million, four hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars in the personnel category, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in the supplies category, twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars in the services category, thirty-five thousand dollars in the capital category for a total of one million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, nineteen dollars.
Second.
Great. How many updates or changes on?
I have nothing to add other than the taxpayers who are paying this, that, paying for this fund, that it has really enhanced the quality of law enforcement for the sheriff's office in our community.
That's good enough. Good to hear.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just sorry, I'm glancing through. Are there questions to my right? Any questions on my left? All right. I do like the idea of moving positions, but we can make, make a note for next year, somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody smarter than I am remember to do that. Okay. Well, if there is nothing further from counsel, all those in favor of accepting the sheriff's public safety lit budget requests, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And that concludes the budget review for the sheriff's office.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Scott.
I do have one thing that I would like to bring to council's attention. It's, it's not with the sheriff, sorry. It's with the general fund, the building department. Sorry. So when I was going through my edits today, I realized that I had not removed the health insurance for that vacant position. So, um, and I can't remember the name of the, what that fund number is.
It says zero-one-six-one.
There it is. So, um, no, I'm in county building, zero-one. That's county buildings. It's the building department.
Location zero-three-one-two. Sorry, my fault.
There we go. Yeah, so when we left the one dollar, we changed the FICAN, the PERF, but I did not change the insurance, so we need to change that. And...
Counsel, I move, we reopen Fund 01000, general fund, location three-one-two, building department, and reduce the line one-eight-zero-zero-one, full-time self-insurance from a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to, what is it, a hundred?
One-oh-eight.
Hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor of passing this motion as stated by Counsel McKim, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
There's the re.
Now do I restate? Okay. Here we go. In Fund 100312, building department, in the personnel category, seven hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars in these services categories, supplies category, six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. We have more. For a total of, oh.
Services.
That's probably zooming. And then for, oh, pardon me. In the services category, thirty-seven thousand, seventy-five dollars for a total of seven hundred and forty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars.
We just reduced it by.
All in favor of approving this change to the building department budget, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And the auditor is going to fill in for the recorder and present his budget in his absence at his request. So we're going to jump back to the item, which was like seven? A, yeah, there we go, seven A.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 1004, general fund recorder, category requests of, in the personnel category, three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars for a total of three hundred and sixty, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and seven dollars.
Thank you, counsel, for allowing me to help Eric, our county recorder out tonight. As you've probably heard, he's been in an accident and he regrets that he cannot be here tonight. However, he is a tremendous individual that I work very, very close with, recorder and auditor. We work together substantially, so we're, we're, we're working together every day. So we sort of know what each other does real time. And with the approval of his council liaison, I'm just covering this for Recorder Schmitz, who's an amazing person. I care a lot about him. He's an excellent worker. So I do want to point out that there's very little change in the personnel, his personnel lines. The only changes is the changes that you guys ask us to put in there and the, and the correlating, you know, benefit expenses. So it's pretty cut and dry.
All right, are there any questions on the recorder's budget?
Just that, oh, sorry, just, just that, to note, like all the other budgets that have elected officials in it, it looks like the increase is larger than it is because we didn't budget originally for the raises we gave them last year. And plus the, you know, chief deputy is going to ninety percent of the elected officials. It looks like a larger increase than it really is.
Yes. Yes, following your instructions.
Yeah, yeah, that's all formally.
Good point, yeah. Just, just to let folks know. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of accepting the recorder's general fund budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And we have item seven B.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 11600000, identification, security protection, category requests of eighteen thousand dollars in the services category for a total of eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
This is very simple. This is to reject the identity and to redact information that is required by law to redact. This is just the expense of it. No change here.
Any questions? All those in favor of accepting the identification, security, protection budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. And we have item seven C.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and review Fund 12170000, county elected officials training, category requests of eighteen thousand dollars in the services category for a total of eighteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you, counsel, for hearing this item. This item actually pays for elected officials to attend state-required training and alternate training for their chief deputies. This is required by the state for the recorder to collect this money inside his fees, maintain this fund and, and, and have the fund available for us as elected officials and chief deputies to use it. It, it used to be, two years prior, only for elected officials, but they were, these funds were gaining so much money that, that they wanted to help the county councils out by reducing their general fund for chief deputy training and putting it in this fund. So now it is used for elected officials, certain elected officials, their chief deputies, and any other major deputies, like for instance, our financial director would be an example of a major deputy, a predominant role. So again, it's, nothing's really changed. This is just a way to alleviate expenses in the general fund.
Are there any questions?
I was just trying to look up what the cat, what the January or June thirtieth cash balance is.
I would appreciate that, actually.
Gateway, the gateway four B module is really, really slow, so I'm just watching the spinning wheel right now.
Well, while you're looking that up, I will tell you that we do have the opportunity at the end of the year to transfer some expenses that were spent other ways that this would actually cover to, to, to pull them out of other funds when we do have a surplus for, for, in this fund. We have never done that yet because the fund was new and it had to build up. But that is something that we'll be looking with Eric. His new chief deputy starts coming next week. It's a new chief deputy, Amy Swain. So that'll be something that probably her and Bree will look at as, as we move forward. So very good use of this, these funds, very good use of these funds.
So the, the four B, the June thirtieth cash balance is ninety-two thousand.
Okay.
That's, this fund is just building up and up and up.
Yeah, and that explains why it was a very low.
Yeah, the law just doesn't allow us to spend as much as.
But, but you understand what I'm saying is if we can find other expenses that could have been used for this, we can. Training-related.
Do it after the fact.
Exactly.
No, that's good.
And we're going to do that. We're going to help everybody that we can.
That sounds great.
It's still new.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of accepting the county elected officials' training budget request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Kim, are there any other comments? Any comments from counsel? Seeing none, this meeting is recessed till Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, at 5:00 PM.